We'll call this meeting to order of May 7, 2012. This is a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First up tonight is a presentation from National Grid. They're going to give us the status of their location for their substation. They have a new piece of land that they've been looking at. And our council solicitor would like to provide a summary, just a little history to bring us where we've been and where we are now.
I just want everybody to understand what's happening at the moment. But the start a few years ago when National Grid came before the council, looking for a zone change, noted, put a substation on River Road. And I think most of you are probably aware of the parcel land that they were talking about. The council didn't allow that, so National Grid appealed that ruling to the Public Utilities Commission, which has the ability to override decisions that the council makes because you need electricity and the Public Utilities Commission is charged with finding ways to get that to you. So the legislature has given it the authority to override local decisions when it interferes with the provision of something as essential to you as electricity. The proceedings before the Public Utilities Commission advanced a little bit and then were stayed. The Public Utilities Commission, actually, some of you will remember, came down here and held a public hearing and listened to everybody's concerns. They then took a site visit and walked the proposed site. They also walked some alternative sites that had been flooded at the time, including one down on Narragansett Way that Council Buck was particularly interested in having him cite in. Since all of that has occurred, National Grid has done a lot of work to try and determine whether or not there was any other location in town where this thing could be located that would be more palatable, I'll say, to the town and also worked for their purposes. Narragansett Way was dismissed because it flooded badly during the floods that we had. And you can't put a substation in a place where it floods. But they didn't just limit their inquiry to that, and I'm sure you're going to hear about that tonight. They went to quite a number of other sites to try and determine whether or not they could make it work. They finally have arrived at one that they believe is a good site for their purposes and is also a good site for the town, and it will be a better site than River Road. And what they're going to do here tonight is they're going to tell us about that proposal. And they're essentially asking the council to approve that proposal and to enter into an agreement with them that will allow the PUC to locate the substation there. So that's where we are, and that's what National Grid are going to be talking to us about tonight.
Thank you.
I have one question. Pat, we're not making the decision tonight.
No, you're going to --
We're going to do it at the next meeting.
Yes.
Good evening, council members. My name is Peter Lackett. I'm an attorney at Robinson Cole in Providence. I represent National Grid. I've given each of you a handout that has four items in it. It has a copy of the notice of the meeting that we've sent out to the abutters, to the Cook property that we'll talk about this evening, a copy of the information sheet and aerial photograph that's also been delivered to each of the abutters, and then two plans that we have enlarged on boards over here. One entitled Property Zone Manufacturing Over 12 Acres and the second titled Alternate Substation Sites. What I'd like to do is just very briefly go over a little bit of the history, a couple of things that Ms. Buckley didn't mention. I have with me Michael Ruck, who's the project manager for the substation project, Sue Moberg, who's the environmental scientist from VHB working on the project with us, Paul Stasiak, who's the National Grid Community Relations person, who's been talking to the abutters. I do have an affidavit of notice that I'll give to your clerk. It's an affidavit that we sent the notice to each of the abutters by first-class mail, signed by my assistant, who did the actual mailing. As Ms. Buckley mentioned, the purpose of the presentation tonight is to update the council on the status of our search for the perfect site for a substation in Hopkinton. The proposed site on Route 3 that was the subject of the proceedings two or three years ago was a 12-acre site. It was going to be a 115 KV or 1,000-volt substation. The substation would be connected to the transmission line that goes by the property. It was designed for two transformers. Approximately three-quarters of an acre would be fenced in for the substation. The plan was to build one transformer initially and have the capacity to add a second transformer within the fenced-in area if and when the need arose. As Ms. Buckley mentioned, the council enacted an amendment to the zoning ordinance. It wasn't the amendment that we had sought from you, so we ended up appealing it to the Public Utilities Commission. And the appeal's been basically on hiatus for the past couple of years while we've dealt with a couple of issues. The first was the request that the Public Utilities Commission made that we look at alternative sites for the substation, which we've done, and I will fill you in on that. And then the second event, which I'm sure most of us remember, was the flooding in March of 2010, which flooded and destroyed the Westerly Substation. This led to brownouts and blackouts both in Westerly and in Hopkinton and led National Grid planners to look at the question of what do we do to replace the Westerly Substation? And the conclusion that the planners reached was that the best solution is to build a Hopkinton substation as planned, but add a second transformer to handle the load that was no longer served with the Westerly Substation out of service. I want to describe the alternative site review that we've done. We've done a couple of things. Basically, the site requirements are, number one, that the site be near the 115 KV transmission line. And if you look at the first plan in the pack that I gave you, it's entitled Property Zone Manufacturing Over 12 Acres. And down at the bottom, you'll see the transmission line right-of-way running east-west across the southern part of Hopkinton. This plan shows dotted lines representing the bands, the distance from that transmission line as the crow flies. In order to connect a substation to a transmission line, National Grid needs 150 or 200-foot wide right-of-way. So if you're going to be more than a few hundred feet or a few hundred yards from the transmission line with the substation site, it becomes expensive and very difficult and perhaps disruptive to acquire that sort of a piece of property or rights in that property. And finally, the site should be minimum of 3 to 5 acres. Now, the exercise we went through with the plan that you're looking at is to review sites within the town of Hopkinton that would comply with the zoning amendment. The two major points are that the sites be zone manufacturing and that they be 12 acres or larger. And we identified 20 sites, I think four or five of which were vacant at the time we did this review. Down in the far southeastern corner of the town is the property, a large property that's now owned by the Hopkinton Land Trust, I believe was acquired by the Nature Conservancy a number of years ago. In the southwest corner, these are the orange sites that are obviously on the map, southwest corner is the Garrity Manufacturing property, and I'll talk about that in a minute. The other properties, the Ashway Line and Twine is on the western edge. And the balance of the properties are in the vicinity of Exits 1 and 2 off of 95, and they include Thompson's Lumber on Woodville Road and the Green Plastics property up on Canachet Road. Obviously, if we were to try and site a substation on one of those properties up along 95, we'd have a very significant issue of acquiring 150 or 200-foot-wide strip of land down through basically the middle of the town to connect to the transmission line. So the conclusion that National Grid reached was that none of these sites that we've identified on this plan are suitable for a 115 KV substation. Now, the second plan, Sue, if you'd put that board up, please. The second plan shows the alternate sites that we've reviewed, we've considered and analyzed, and we've done a comprehensive review of these sites. In green over on the left is the proposed site on Route 3, between Route 3 and River One site that was suggested during our proceedings, I believe it was during the PUC hearing, was Mr. Mann's site. It's on Narragansett Way, south of Chase Hill Road. Actually, it's a small site there. We've looked at that site and their constraints due to the layout of the site and some wetlands issues that make that a difficult site to use. Right next to it is what we're calling the Diesel Site. It's the site of National Grid's former diesel generation. Again, it's on the river, and this site was flooded during the floods, which would have made a substation on that site inaccessible. And we really don't want to get in that position if we can avoid it. And then just to the west of that site is the Garrity Manufacturing Site. And the Garrity Manufacturing Site is occupied by an existing building, and it was determined it would be difficult to squeeze a 115 KV substation and transmission taplines into that site. Another site that came up in the discussions, and there were a number of discussions among National Grid and town representatives and other interested parties, but another site that came up was Woodville Road, which is up at the northern, at the top of this, basically the top of this plan. And that appears to be five or six sites that have been, I believe, have been subdivided. And again, whether or not you could build a substation there, that's three or four or more miles from there down to the transmission right-of-way. So that didn't appear to be a very practical alternative. Somebody suggested that we ought to look at the existing Ashway Substation, National Grid's existing substation, which is on Oak Street. It's a very small site. It's not a 115 KV substation. It's a smaller voltage substation. It's roughly an acre. And in order to build a substation there, well, let me see, wherever the substation is built, that substation has to remain in service until the new substation goes into service. So it would be a juggling act to try and build a substation there. Certainly would require the acquisition of one or several adjacent residential homes, residences, and displaced people. So that was determined not to be a practical solution. Another property was Crandall Lane, which is immediately east of the preferred, proposed Route 3 site. It's across Route 3. It's adjacent to the transmission line right-of-way. We did some investigation and determined that this would be a good site. And we spent a number of months in negotiations with the owner of the site and three or four times came real close to making a deal. And then the deal changed, and finally, the company decided that they pursued it long enough, wasn't real clear that the property owner wanted to sell, but in any case, it just, we couldn't pin down a deal. The final site we looked at is the site that we want to talk about tonight. It's the Cook Property on Ashway Road over here. It's right on the existing transmission line right-of-way. This was another site that Mr. Mann had suggested in our many discussions with him. And the site is about 16 acres. It's on the south side of Ashway Road. The transmission line right-of-way goes through the property, which will make it relatively straightforward to connect the transmission line into the substation. Any substation has to be connected to the distribution system, and the plan would be to run a total of seven feeders out of the substation. Two of them would go west on the existing 115 KV right-of-way towards Route 3. Two would go on Ashway Road northwest towards Route 3. Three more would come out of the substation and go down to Chase Hill Road. One would go east, and two would go west towards Route 3. The site, I believe you have an aerial photograph of the site in the materials. The front of the site is about a five-acre field that has been farmed, and there's a fairly significant vegetated buffer around the back of the property. National Grid plans to invest something in the neighborhood of $15 million in this site, building the substation and transmission and distribution. They anticipate that it'll take roughly a year to do the engineering and design for the project, once it's, assuming the council agrees with us. And then roughly a year to construct it, to get it in service by 2015. Basically, what we're here looking for tonight, or at your next meeting, is agreement by the council to settle the proceeding before the Public Utilities Commission, in exchange for which National Grid would build the substation on the Cook Property rather than on the Route 3 property. That's the real brief overview, and if you have any questions, I'm sure Mr. Ruck would be happy to take them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. To let everybody here know, what we're going to do is, if the council has any questions, we'll get to those. But I want everybody here to know that you're going to have an opportunity to express what's on your mind. And everybody gets one turn, and then if you need to come back a second time after we're all done, we'll do that. But I just want everybody to know you will have an opportunity to weigh in on the proposal. Frank, you want to start?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions here that I came up. Within this proposed site, you said the substation is going to be confined within one acre?
Roughly, roughly an acre, yes.
Okay. And then if you had to add a second substation, would it be within that one acre?
Yes, yes. The second transformer would be --
Transformer, okay.
Yes.
Within that. Okay. And so where is it going to actually be within that 16-acre parcel? Do you have any idea at this point?
Well, there's plenty of latitude as to where it would go. Our preference would be to be in the forested area to screen it. And one of the primary reasons that that would occur is it shortens the transmission component up to the transmission line, which is a very expensive component project. If, based on the studies and such things as wetlands come into play in this, the last resort is somewhere in the field itself that's been farmed for a number of years. But then we would add some screening.
Can you point out where you'd like to have it as a secondary spot?
I mean, a secondary?
Yeah, well, you mentioned a farm.
Oh, well, it could be placed anywhere within the farm area currently.
Okay, so hopefully.
It may be best to have it more to the northwest, again, because you shorten the distance to the transmission.
But then the question is, you would prefer to put it back in this forested area somewhere? Is that correct?
Yes. And I assume the Cook family have been interested in selling. Have you come to terms with that, with those folks?
Yes, we have an agreement with them.
And so that initial location, which was next to the Route 3 proposed site with the, I guess that deal fell through, you said? It just, you couldn't come to terms with the?
The Crandall Lane site, yes.
Couldn't come, okay.
No.
All right.
It was very close a couple of times, and it slipped away.
Okay. All right. That's all I have at the moment.
Margaret, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. I almost want to continue on the area where the transformers will be placed. I know you would prefer them to be as close to that wire as possible, that 115 KVA line as possible. It certainly, if it's going to be on that property, that would be my favorite place too, because I would like it to disappear entirely. And so if it can be on that pointed section, which is not only in the woods but completely away from anyone's eye and, you know, so we can keep that road looking as nice as it does, I'd certainly prefer it as far back as possible. I'm sure your engineers would prefer to be as close to that KVA line as possible as well. So that's my preference if that works out with the wetlands. The other issue is the field. The field has obviously been there for decades and decades. I'm very fond of that field. I like seeing that field. And there are people who, I don't know if you are able to build further in the back, if you would allow that field to continue to be used as a field or leased out as a field, because it really makes a really lovely section of open space on Ashway Road. So my concern is both the field, I'd really like that not to look like a station. I'd like it to continue to look like a field, and I'd like it to tuck as far back as you can. Do you have any feelings from your engineers or from DEM where that might be a problem?
One issue I see with regard to that is the pointed parcel that shoots off up over the transmission line. It's so narrow there that the --
Oh, I'm not talking about that area.
Okay.
It can be, it can be.
But anywhere within the bot, no, I can't there.
You still have to be back in here?
Only because the width of that netting down there is the width I need for the transmission right-of-way, the opening for the transmission cell.
So you're using this as the opening for the right-of-way?
Yes.
And you're still planning on building back here?
I could on either corner of that squared-up portion. Good wood.
The western side.
Yes.
Right, and, right.
This is, I'm sorry.
This is too narrow for anything other than the transmission coming out. But if I could put it in this corner or in this corner, that would be my preference.
And my concern is trying to get it hidden so that it's not out in the open. And back here, it is certainly far more available than it is back in here, as tucked away and as hidden as possible. I do like this site certainly better than the last site because there are far fewer homes by them. The last, the original site, we had people everywhere. So I certainly appreciate you're looking for something that was far more rural, forested, so we can make it disappear, hide it as much as possible. That's all.
Tom?
Well, this has definitely been a long process, hasn't it? So my understanding is it's going to be a three-quarter acre lot that you're going to clear, you're going to put two transformers in there, run your KVA lines up to that main transmission line. Now, there'll be no lighting in that area, correct? That's permanent on 24/7?
No.
Okay. You will have service lights where you can?
Yes.
Okay. You also stated that you're going to keep this thing buffered, and we're going to do what we can to shield it from view.
Regardless of where it is, yes.
Yes, okay.
I might point out that we will need an access road that would come into the back, would come along the side of that farm land. We do need the access road.
I would prefer to see it towards the, let's see, it'd be, looking down at the field, it'd be the Route 3 side of the lot, up in that area. That's the furthest away from those houses. That would be my number-one spot. If you can get it up in there, I really like that area. And Bob had brought up a good point. I know the people who have hanged that field for many, many years, and if there's a possibility of still allowing them to continue that process, that'd be good for them.
So that's something we can entertain.
Other than that?
Thank you. Scott, do you have anything?
Yes. I think my council colleagues came up with a lot of good points. I do have a couple of questions about your other sites, which I think would be relevant. I think it's important to note that the council, in opposing the River Road proposal, by remaining firm on that, that we were, another alternative did come to the surface. So I'm glad about that. What is the situation with your property on River Road? What is the future of that? Do you?
I think that's probably something that we'd have to run up the, well, there's an existing transmission line that goes through the property, so that will remain transmission line. And as far as the rest of the property, I don't think there's been any discussion of that.
Okay. And the only other things, I know that the Chase Hill site was ruled out. What is the planned future of that by National Grid? And also, any other sites you own in town like the Oak Street site? Do you have any comments on that? It might be a little off the topic. The National Grid is a unique property owner in the town of Hopkinton.
The Ashway sub would be retired, dismantled and retired as soon as this was ready for load.
That's the Oak Street.
That's the Oak Street site.
And what happens when you, you just leave it, you try to, does National Grid try to sell that, or you just retain that?
Typically, typically, the company doesn't sell old sites. They retain them.
That, I believe that site is also part of an easement. Aren't there lines that go through there going north?
There is, runs through that property, yes. So it's highly unlikely that that's ever let go from the common.
I have no other questions at this time.
Tom?
Speaking of the Oak Street site, when you dismantle that, in your due diligence, would you be willing to bring it back to a vegetated state? I mean, maybe bring in some loom and seed it a little bit, other than just having the crushed stone and big open square?
Yeah.
I don't know if you guys re-vegetate anything that you've dismantled.
I certainly can entertain that. I don't know to what extent they'll allow that to occur. That would be my preference, but I'd have to run that through our environmental group as well.
Good. Frank?
Yeah, I just had one follow-up. How often on the sites, the transformer sites, how often do trucks visit that site? On a regular basis, you know, once it's up and running, functional?
Oh, quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. And just small truck, pickup trucks checking out?
Yes. It's a trouble truck, it's a pickup truck. The only time you'd see something significant going in there is if there's a real issue with --
With the station?
issue with the station itself.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you, maybe this question for the solicitor. Do they have, if this moved forward, do they have to go before any other board, site plan review, anything? Are there any, do they have to go to the planning board or?
I don't know the answer to that, but I also know that what we would be doing is agreeing to allow the PUC to override whatever they would have to do in order to allow them to place it there. So part of what they're asking us to do is enter into an agreement that would allow them to place it there without having to comply with all kinds of other issues in town. Is that right, Peter?
Yes, that's correct. We still have to deal with wetlands.
Right, and DEM and those sorts of things.
But of course, the council could, in its decision to move forward, could put some stipulations in there. Anything they agreed to, for instance?
You have to keep in mind that what they're asking us to do is something cooperatively.
Mm-hmm, of course.
So you could put conditions in there if they agreed to them. If they didn't agree with the conditions that you wanted to put in there, then they're in a position where they can move forward with the PUC on the other side.
Yes, but of course, it's something that we could always go back and forth with. But before we even get to that, why don't we go down some of the lists of things that you appear to be agreeing to tonight? Let's see, the buffer, for instance. The, when we talk about a buffer, we, of course, you already have a natural buffer. So I would think you, that the council would like to see you do and perhaps you'd like to do yourselves, but you could, something that you could agree to tonight is when you have to go in and clear and you do site and you decide where everything's going to go, you could decide to leave all the trees along the, along the property lines, of course, except for the access road and perhaps at the other section where you have to run up to the line, that's understandable. But the larger piece, the larger square, for instance, along the obvious, call it the west and then the other side, you know, the three-side of the square?
Yeah.
For instance, you could leave a buffer of trees. Now, when we talk about a buffer of trees, what do you think is reasonable? 20 feet, 30 feet? I mean, do you have something in mind?
I don't know how they can know that until they know how to place the site.
Well, it's like they care what they might want to offer.
But they're, you have to understand that they're in the preliminary engineering stages of where they can locate this thing. So I don't know that they're, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're in a position to, they can't tell you specifically where they're going to locate it on the site. So they can't know for certain what kind of size of buffer they can leave. Now, we could certainly ask them to agree to something like, they would make their best efforts to leave as much vegetation as possible undisturbed or something like that. That's, that accomplishes what you're looking for.
Well, I-
I think trying to get them to commit to specific.
Well, I'm going to try to get them to commit to a little bit of specifics. Can you give us an example? You've done these sorts of things before. Do you think perhaps?
Well, you may be, I, in our previous discussions with the Narragansett Way site and all the other sites that we've discussed, you have stated that you would only clear as much as you would need for your distances. And I think that the 115 KVA was what, 150 feet wide?
Correct. 150, 200, yes.
200 in that range.
Yeah, well, I think that would give you some kind of, they're only going to clear as much as they need to.
Yeah, exactly. We don't have any interest in flatting.
Clear-cutting, yeah. I mean, that's how they presented it before.
We only need what we need to put the facilities in. That's it.
So coming up with language that states that specifically, that you'll do your very best to leave a buffer, that you're only cut what you need to cut, I mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see, what else? Let's see. Where on the site do you have the wetlands?
Sue, maybe you could-
I had one of my senior wetland staff visit the site and perform a general reconnaissance of the site for wetlands that would be subject to the DEM jurisdiction and also Corps of Engineers. So looking at the site, let's see, there's a wetland system that runs across the right-of-way here that's off-site, but this area down here is generally all wet. There's a drainage way that runs across the site here, so there's a sort of a spring towards the top of the hill, runs onto the site here. There's a small impoundment that was probably for livestock and then that overflows and runs in a channel down the hill and then hits a swale at the bottom of the hill and drains into this larger wetland system.
So based upon the placement of the areas that are wet, are you going to be able to put an access road between those two?
We would need to, we would need to bridge that.
Right.
And that would require DEM approval. So the, you know, when Michael was talking about his choices being this corner and this corner of the site, that is intended to miss the wetlands. So we're trying to minimize our impact or we will be required to minimize our wetland impact in order to be in compliance with the state and federal regulations. So the alternative would be, you know, bridging or spanning overhead with transmission or bridging the drainage way with some sort of a culvert or small structure to get the driveway across to the further north corner.
There isn't really enough room for what you'd like to do down in that lower corner. Is there?
Well, we're not entirely sure. As Michael said, we're still in the very preliminary stages. I don't think any surveying has actually been done, so we're not entirely sure what the grades are and that will really dictate where the substation will fit. So because the site has some amount of a slope to it, there'll be balancing cuts and fills in order to level off a site where the substation can be built, which is another reason why we can't really predict exactly how much of a buffer can be preserved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The item that Tom Buck brought up about the lighting, it sounded like that was absolutely not an issue that you agree, there isn't going to be any 24/7 lighting. What type of security do you have for the facility like this?
Pit bulls.
[laughing].
Electric fences.
It's typically just an eight-foot fence with three strands of barbed wire on the top. Facility is locked with a company lock, so only company people have the key to this. There probably will be a small building on the site that would probably have a trip to it that'll notify security, which is off-site, but we'll probably have a link to that.
Now, the other section though, where you have the barbed wire, if, does that get tripped to? Is that-
The barbed wire will be the fence that-
Right.
-that all of this facility, except for the transmission line, is-
Oh, it's around, it would encompass the building?
Correct, everything.
Oh, okay, okay. All right. The access road, do you fence that normally?
Typically, no.
You typically don't do that? Okay.
You may put a gate out at the-
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't mean that kind of fence and I meant of any type. I didn't necessarily mean barbed wire.
No.
You don't typically do that? Uh, let's see, was there, um, oh, and the only last thing I could think of is more of a issue of the town being informed. If we move forward with this one, I would like to make sure that the town manager's informed of every event. As the project moves forward, if you find a site and the town comes to an agreement that you let the manager know where, as things develop. You've cleared the hurdle with DEM, for instance. We found a site, this is where it's going to go. It'd be good to keep the town informed and the best way to do it is through the manager.
Yeah, no problem.
Barbara, you had something?
Yeah, I was wondering, because we were talking about buffering and things that concern us as a town, if there was a way, and maybe you can do it in the cottages, if we approve this, that you could work with the planning board as, so that they can give advice. I know that you don't have to go in front of them, but I'm thinking about for buffering for things of that nature.
It's a difficult one, not having some of the precise information at this point.
Right, and I'm not concerned about the building, it is what it's going to be. I don't think we have any design concerns about it. But I know that the planning board has often dealt with our wetlands, our buffers, the bridging, and they may be able to give you some advice on that, on that level.
Yeah, I think we could consult with them on basically screening and buffering, those sorts of issues, yes.
I mean, these are, these are ones that they may have suggestions about. I know there's a lot of it that it simply is, has to be the way that you need to do it.
Yes. There may be some trade-offs. I know how dear the farmland is to you. But if the buffer that results at the end of this, if we're able to put it in the back, is thin, we can always add buffer in the farmland portion if that's-
Sure. The buffering is far more important than the farmland, but the farmland is certainly, if it can be used as a hayfield, it is a way to, with the town and the citizens and the way we like our town to look, and at the same time, it gives you what you need as well.
Yeah.
That's all.
Any other questions? Is there any, are you all set now?
We're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
I just have a question.
Go ahead. Can you go up to the microphone, please? And everybody should leave their name and section of town you're in.
Dorothy Gardner, Conanshire Driftway. I'm not near this. I was just, just a question. Are you going to own the land outright? And I ask this because you stated during, during your introduction that you would have a right-of-way within this area. And if it belongs to you, if the land belongs to you, do you actually need a right-of-way? You know, it was just a curious face.
It's sort of a figure of speech for us to say, a right-of-way is the transmission line width.
Correct.
But we will own it, yes.
You own all the land, so it's not something where the farmer will be able to use this land and you're just going to have a little chunk of it?
No, other than, and if we were to create a lease with whoever's farming it to continue that, right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Gentlemen in the back?
Yes. My name is Ted Dye on Chase Hill. Why are substations not been allowed in the two-acre zone area? In the past, they have not been allowed to build a substation on a two-acre zoning. Why are they now going to allow substations in the two-acre?
Because it's much bigger than two acres.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, because it's much bigger than two acres.
I still can't hear you.
I'm sorry, can you tell them you're close?
It's much bigger than two acres. This site is much bigger?
Sixteen acres, sir.
Okay, that answers that.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
And then, what are the health problems associated with a substation? Can anybody answer that for me? And how far out does it go? I know in the past there have been health problems associated with substations. I read about them in the newspapers back along. I don't know, maybe things are different now.
Okay, that's one question we're going to, we're going to need to get to. Do you have any, do you have any other questions?
That's it.
Okay.
Health concerns and that's it.
Do you have any response?
Yes, I guess. Principally, the substation itself has various-
Speak loudly, Mr. Ruck.
The substation itself is not the component that really creates any health problems. I think particularly you're talking about EMFs. It's the transmission line itself that typically creates EMFs. That transmission line would be the connection through that spur that would get up to our existing line. Typically, again, the EMFs reduce their levels very, very quickly as they get away from the line. A 200-foot-wide right-of-way, similar to the one that the 1870 is on, at the edges, is close to zero as far as EMFs are concerned. So your input, your, if you're going to have any effects, and I don't believe that we've concluded that there are effects, health effects to EMF at this point, but you'd have to walk under the line and be maybe permanently there to reside there to have any long-term. Again, there's no proof that there are long-term effects at this point.
But better safe than sorry, so you please stay away.
It is, you know, the EMFs are around us with everything we do. It's the exposure and the magnitude of it that creates any issue if there is one, as anything.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Jim Cherenza, Chase Hill Road. I'm going to butter to this proposed site. I had some health questions also. And I know there's a lot of wetlands on that site and I see that your small one-acre site on a 16-acre parcel keeps moving closer and closer to those houses. You know, I'm just, if there is health issues, I'd like to see them. You know, I've got animals, what's the impact on my animals? Rural piece of Hopkin that I bought isn't going to be so rural anymore with a humming substation in my backyard. Just questions, as far as the health stuff, my children, you know, the buffer zone, 200 feet, 200 feet doesn't go very far in that piece of land. That's all I've got for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ruck, or Peter, one of the other, perhaps it's better for your environmental person. The question I would have, because I think you're very familiar with this property, is if you look at the closest point that is next to Chase Hill Road, that point down there?
Sure.
Way down, yes, that section there. How far away is that, for instance, to Chase Hill Road? What's the distance, would you guess?
The scale on this figure is 80 feet to the inch, so I don't have that scale with me, but I'd say it's probably like 300 feet.
All right, I just wanted to try to get a feel for it. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? We'll go back to you in second round. We want to do first round first. Yes, ma'am.
Well, sorry, Karen Cherenzia, also on Chase Hill Road. You've already been lied to a lot. This man, Paul, how do you say his name? Stacek. Okay. Was that you? Okay, you're the one who approached me. You said the land was already acquired, okay, for one, the week before, okay? And that was on the 24th of April, so that would have been the week before. You said the land was already, it was all done, it was acquired already. Second of all, it has been surveyed. They were there last week, they were there this week, and they were on my neighbor's property as well on Chase Hill this week. So, I mean, already straight off, there's a lot of lies going on. There's a lot of unanswered questions, so I, before the next meeting.
I'd like to answer a couple of, actually both those points. Number one, in terms of what happened on the 24th, we asked Mr. Stacek not to start the outreach, the visits to the, butters to this property until the purchase and sale agreement was signed. The purchase and sale agreement was signed and returned to us that week. We don't acquire the property until we get approvals to build it and we're ready to build. If we don't get those approvals, then obviously we're not going to acquire the property. In terms of survey, I can't speak to who was out there. I know we've been trying to get the surveyors out there. Maybe you can.
The property was flown air, by photograph, by plane for a photograph that then we can tie in the surveying, probably three, four weeks ago prior to the leaves coming out. That's an opportune window for us to get that flown. After the purchase and sales was signed, I contacted-
After the purchase and sales was signed, I contacted our property department and asked them to actually go out and get a proposal for the surveying that would tie that photograph in, and VHB, Sue represents, started performing that work, I think, in the last couple of days.
Okay, before we go on, I, I wanna make something clear to everyone here tonight. National Grid has afforded, actually in this state, I don't know about any other state, but in Rhode Island, they're afforded a great deal of latitude. If they wanna do something, they can go, and the town won't let them, they can go to the PUC, and chances are, they're gonna be able to do what they need to do. Especially in an instance like this, where you know there's gonna be a problem with electricity. Now, they can look at different sites and try to find the best one, but I want you to know that they, they weren't required to knock on your door and talk to you, they weren't required to send out a notice. So they're, they are, and I understand that maybe in the past, things haven't gone well with some other groups, but with the National Grid, I've found, and this council's found, that they have been polite, they have been informational, they've given us what we've needed and when we've asked, they've met with us, and I just wanted to point out that they are willing to work with all of us. So I, I just wanted to leave it at that. I guess enough said. Yes, sir.
First of all, I'm glad to see tonight that National Grid is staying to answer people's questions, unlike the first session we had for the River Road Route 3 session. Thank you. Couple of questions. One question is, for future electric, electric use for the town, how does a site this size address any future growth 10 years, 15, 20, 25 years out? That's question one. And question two is, I was wondering if someone could show us on the highway map, the street map of the town, where those lines that you referenced would be running out of? I didn't, I wasn't really able to get a good mental picture when you referenced where those would go once they left the transmission site. Are those on already existing line sites that are already there, or would those be additional new sites, or old sites reopened, or what would that look like? Please.
Seven, seven feeders leave the substation for the service. Two will go out and connect the existing transmission line and head to the west. Wherever it is, wherever it is on the property, there will be two that come out and head north, northwest on Ashway, and three that head south, when it connects up to Chase, and one will head to the east and two will go west. Typically, they'd be existing right-of-ways poles that we have, in this case, when you add additional feeders onto the, helping have to go up in height. Most poles in this area are probably in the 40-foot range, and we probably have to go to 45 for a while until those break down for the distribution.
So I guess more specifically, I'm curious, the, the lines that run, come off of Chase Hill, down through Amelia Street, which run within about 40 feet of my old bedroom that my mother, the house that my mother still lives in. Would those lines have to be enlarged? And there's a set of dead lines that are no longer used, some of the poles are still existing, that run across the back of her property. Would those be reopened? And those go out to Narragansett Way?
Could you show us where your mother's?
I could.
Grand Elaine.
Yeah. Amelia Street. So, we're here, and these high tension lines can be here now, would these poles have to be enlarged? No. Or raised? No. No. That's the transmission line, and what, what we would add to that is very insignificant compared to what's already there. And the second part of that is, the old ones that have come this way, Narragansett Way, is that, is there any intention to reopen that? No. Not now, with this effort. With this effort? Could you expand on that a little bit? I, I don't know, 100 years from now, it means something. It's a property that the company would retain, but there's no plan right now. And that kind of leads into the first question that I asked about, how will this handle future passive issues, potential passive issues, 10 years out, 20 years out, 30 years out? Well, this is here for that effort. And if it does have the capability to go to eight feeders if needed, to sort of survey and expand load in the future. Right now, the load forecast is that at, in 2015, I believe it is, we'll be at 100% load, with the existing substation. I'm frank with regards to this construction, it's quite a big deal.
Thank you. Do you need a follow-up?
Yeah, I just have a follow-up on that. The, our understanding is that the reason you need this substation is that the substation is being created so that you have capacity for another 20 years. That's my understanding. What I thought I just heard you say is that it will be at capacity in 2015.
The existing, the existing.
Well, the existing Ashway, okay. So this is going to, adding this is going to give us capacity for 20, 50 years? Okay, so having this one will give us capacity. Thank you.
The current form, you're right at its marginal limit.
Mm-hmm, that's quite understandable. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, we'll go back to, yes, sir.
I'm Gary Burdick, I'm the abutting property owner on Ashway Road. I have a couple of questions. One is, is there noise from this substation?
Yes. Is that doing?
No. How?
We, I guess at this point, since we haven't done a lot of the study work, relying on the work that was done at the previous site, the original pole site. And what typically is done is you, you form a noise study that gives you the ambient noise, and typically, we use the nighttime noise as a reference rather than the daytime. This would get lost in the daytime noise. So you use the worst case as night. A transformer that we plan to use here is called a low-noise transformer, and typically, as it applied to the old site, we saw a 1 to 4 dB increase in noise. And to put that a little bit in perspective, a 2 to 3 is barely perceivable.
Okay, that was.
There's 2 to 3 decibels in total, we're gonna hear all the time, that's it? Right.
All right, that was one question. The other question is, you stated that possibly you would have to put it in the field itself?
That, that's open to us, it's not our preferred placement.
Okay, have you ever seen that field in heavy rain?
Uh, yes.
You have?
Not in heavy, heavy rain, but in rainy rain.
I've seen where there wouldn't be any green there, it would be all water.
We would have to raise the site enough to get above whatever the 100-year flood is, for instance.
Okay. And the other question is, you say that you're gonna have transmission lines come down to Ashway Road. Where would they come? You're talking about they come down through, across the whole property, down to Ashway Which would?
There, there will be, again, there's seven feeders that will leave the station, two go up on the transmission, up to the existing transmission line. The other five would come out to Ashway Road and then split.
Okay, how would they get to Ashway Road?
Uphold system.
So that rural farmland would be full of poles?
It would run alongside the access road that we would need to get there.
Okay.
Tom?
Couldn't you run those wires down the 115 KVA out to Ashway Road, instead of adding all those poles? You go into it anyway. I mean, wouldn't it be just as feasible just to run it down alongside, using those existing poles?
You wouldn't, yeah.
And then it still gets you to the same space, same spot.
I could look at that. There is a couple of issues with the wetlands, as Sue pointed out, in that area before getting to Ashway Road. But it's something we could look at, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Yes, sir, wait in the back.
Hello, I'm Sean Burdick, I live directly across the street from the proposed site. Couple of my questions have been answered. One was the noise. Also, a second would be the wetlands. Gary did bring up a good point, that seasonally, a lot of that is very wet, standing water. I can see three spots from here of standing water on that proposed site, and they're pretty large areas of standing water. It just would be my concern that, you know, that would go untouched, things would, you know, remain environmentally stable. Also, long-term, would you, as National Grid, always retain the full 16 acres, or would you sell off unneeded property?
Yes, the short answer to that is that we likely retain the entire property for the duration. And again, it's, it, property is not typically disposed of by the company, even, even after retirement, such as what would happen at Oak Street.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, sir, sir, wait, wait. We're gonna do all the, everybody else first, okay? I think you wanted to ask a question.
My name is Sharon Bridge, I live in Diamond Hill Road, excuse me. I have a question for the gentleman from National Grid. You answered Barbara's question and pointed out on her paper that she had, the site you were talking to. From where I was sitting, it was unclear. Would you please go to the model? And I believe Barbara asked, on the short piece of property that goes up and cuts across where the property line is, right in there? I was under the understanding that that is where the substation would be built. It's very close to the lines, from what I understand, from what you were saying to Barbara, that is not going to be the site where it's going to be built?
No.
And the reason is because the width of the smaller spot is not 200 feet?
The, the neck down portion here is about 230 or so. I don't have enough room to put the substation and the transmission lines in that area.
That is not an acre of land?
Uh, just, I don't, I don't think, it's, it isn't total, it could go out to the transmission line, you know, that's a little bit.
Yeah, I know the very point of it is across the transmission lines, but I'm speaking of this side of it, from the, where the narrow neck is, where it widens just a little on one side. That isn't an acre of land where you could build on?
Right, but I don't have enough to get clearances and setbacks for the down, to put it in there.
How much clearance did you need?
I think setbacks are, I mean, we're, current setbacks would fly what, what must be an 50-foot range?
I think that it's 40 feet, 50 feet, and the side yard is 20, 40, and the yard is 50.
Okay, it's 40 feet, not yards? Yeah.
Feet, it's a, it's a, called a side yard, rear yard setback, it's only ordinance, so those are specified by the town, and if we were trying to observe those setbacks, we would not be able to do it within that narrower sort of jog that's.
Even though it's a front porch for sale right next door, 30-plus acres of front porch for sale, half the price, very cheap.
The reason I ask that question is the fact that from an abutter and a citizen of Hopkinton, that would be an ideal site, I think. It would be quite hidden, it wouldn't, and it wouldn't interfere with the farm field. When I look at this site and what you proposed, where the wetlands is, is, I think, the preferred site for many people to bring your road in, but that's wetlands. And you said you could, it's not wetlands?
No, I can't do that, I'm not.
Right.
Won't interfere with the wetlands.
It won't interfere?
I won't interfere with the wetlands.
Right, so the idea of possibly building a bridge, that is not going to happen?
Well, there are avenues that we can get permission to bridge over.
Right, but that wouldn't be your preference?
We'll look at it as part of the planning process to see what, what opportunity we would have there and the cost associated with that.
So it looks like your preferred site would be near Chase Hill, and that's probably where the road would come in. My concern about that is that you're, you will need, because of the lines that will be feeding out of there, that whole area will be loaded with telephone poles for all, all the coming down to Ashway Road and then going to those transmission lines.
For the most part, I, I, it's difficult to say, because we're early here, but for the most part, it's changing out existing poles with a larger taller pole. It's not adding a new line of poles next to the existing line.
So if you located the substation in that corner by Chase Hill? Right. You could string the wire across the field down to Ashway Road without putting any other poles?
Well, you would bring it across the edge of the field with that access road.
Right.
Out to Ashway Road.
Right.
And then we would use sets of poles from there to distribute, and those poles would have to be larger than what are currently there.
Okay, so down the access road, there wouldn't be any need for any poles?
Yes, it would.
Okay, and then across the back of the property, going out to the transmission line, you'll need poles all the way along the back, too?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, did you, did you already speak?
No.
I'm sorry. You did, but the other gentleman, okay.
Hi, my name is Carl Rosen, I live on River Road, and I've been here a few times and, and with National Grid at some meetings in the previous process. I recognize a couple of things that I want to comment on. One, I don't think there's ever gonna be a good place for another electrical site in Hopkinton, we're a small town with residences. That being said, I want to compliment and thank the town council for all their support and hard work, and working with us from River Road, that is kind of bringing this meeting out tonight. I think National Grid was not at all interested in looking at any alternatives in our town. And the town council, for us a hand, I want to thank Tom Buck for coming to a, a number of meetings with us, and we appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone else? First, we're all done with first round, so go to second? Yes, sir.
The answer I got from you, I, I don't think was right, but maybe it was. I'm gonna read something from National Grid, and it says, "As part of its presentation, National Grid requests the town to agree with National Grid to settle National Grid's appeal presently pending before the Rhode Island Public Utilities Commission to allow construction of a substation on RFR 80 zone." It didn't say anything about lot size. Now, there's something before the Rhode Island Public Utilities Commission, I haven't gotten an answer to. I haven't gotten an answer to.
Okay, let me, let's, we'll try to explain two things. Okay, first of all, the, the River Road project, okay, that's, that's before the, another site is before the PUC.
Is that, is that what this pertains to?
Not this one. That's another site that was done, the first time they came before the council a few years back, I think it's been a few years, was a different site over near the river. Okay, so we're not talking about that tonight. So tonight, this is an alternative site on Ashway Road, which happens to be about 16 acres. When they talk about one acre, they're saying, "We're only going to use one acre for the building." That's why that one acre comes up.
That isn't what it says here, so here. It says in the two-acre zone.
Okay. We have, we have zoning, uh, RFR-1, RFR-80. RFR-80 is thought of as two-acre zoning, meaning you're not supposed to have a lot less than two acres, but you can have much more.
That's a fact.
It's called, it may be called two-acre zoning, but you could have 16 acres or 20 acres. Does that help with what you were asking? I think maybe the language is confusing.
The language in here isn't clear, then.
Right, so are you, was there a specific, something you needed more? Forget the letter.
No, I don't need anymore. I'm just questioning it because this is what I read in the paper.
Right, it was confusing, perhaps.
Okay.
The preference, I think, is for a manufacturing zone, right?
That's what our, that's what the zoning, that's what the zoning amendment required, yes. And what we showed is that there aren't any that are more infatuated.
I'm not opposed to this, because we need electricity. But I'd like to know where we stand with the thing, that's all.
Understand.
The first place we looked, the, I know, the first place we looked at was Oak Street, which had many, many, many people around it. So that's why we sent it to the PUC, and they asked National Grid to look for another location, which is why we're talking about this new location, which does have people near it. They're much further than they were on Oak Street. So we're trying to bury it as far back as we can. Right, and I think they succeeded in finding at least one.
Yes, sir. Tom, you might remind him of the dark sky animation. It's not just a light.
Jim Cherenza, Chase Hill, Butter. You know, there's, there's fewer people, but these, these people chose this place because it was quiet. They, you know. That little triangle piece on the other side of the map, that's, that's a good acre and a half piece of land, if, if not more. And I was understanding that's where the substation would be going up in that corner. I, if it can't, if it can't fit there, excuse me, it's going to end up being right behind that field. And I don't see much cover right behind that field. I don't know, you can't do anything with that piece on the other side. It'd be your easement already. That little triangle piece is, is on the other side of your easement. I mean, nothing for nothing, but I've got two acres on the other side of that easement also. I mean, if it could help anybody get this thing up and out of the way, away from people, I'd be willing to, to talk about that. And another question I have is, how many people in Hopkinton actually lost power during that flood?
I'm sorry, I missed.
How, how many people in Hopkinton actually lost power during that flood?
Bill?
I think most of, most of.
Wasn't it most of the community? Thought it was, I thought it was 100%.
100?
Oh, you had power?
I, I never lost power.
Lucky you!
I, I think the problem's, I think the problem is in West.
Okay.
I, I had power the whole time. And I, I know Wesley has a problem down there, and it seems, you know, they've got more people. They've also got more spaces. You guys might be able to squeeze this in, but I don't know. I, I think the biggest problem lied in Wesley. Why do we have to pay for it? That's, that's my question.
Uh, anyone else that would like to, yes, ma'am?
Sharon Bridge, Diamond Hill Road. I have a, a question about the Garrity property. You said that, um, that property with the building that was on it didn't give you enough room to build. How big is that property? How many acres? 13. If it, 13 acres, I don't know how many acres the building takes up, even if it takes up two or three, that still leaves a, a large piece of property. It's already zoned industrial. Why have you not looked at this more closely? It sounds like you have scratched it off. And yet, there are other criteria that says that that property still would be a good location to locate that substation.
The KVA lines.
Could you, um, could you come up and repeat the reason why that got kicked out?
That, that property was, was heavily subject to, to the flooding that occurred back in 2010. With that and the wetlands mapping that we do have for it, and the building there, there's just not enough room for the, the substation to be placed there.
Explain the KVA lines you'd have to draw.
Well, it wasn't that, Barbara. It was the wetlands behind it.
I understand, but.
It's all wet back there.
To, to attach to these lines, you're going to have to get a 200-foot buffer from this piece of property to your KVA?
Yes, that, that is another transmission line that we, we have that, right now, is rather abandoned, I might say. I think one had, that's the one you were referring to. We would have to open that up to 200 feet to get the connection from the transmission line down to the Garrity. And, and again, a rather severe issue for the town, I thought.
All right, I think that we've, for the most part, I think we've covered things. Is there anything different or new to bring up? Anybody have anything of another nature? Sir, you never spoke. Is there something you'd like to bring up?
Roger Kenyon, River Road. I just want to take a moment to thank the council for their time and effort and judgment and leadership on this issue that's been long and hard for them. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I think we've, we've settled anything. Was there something you needed to add, Scott?
Yes. I've had, I do have a question. I haven't spoken a while. I'd like to know the, what's going to happen to the Wesley site? And is that going to be eliminated? Also, what is the area of power? The power generated on that site is, where, what part of Rhode Island is going to be, get power from that site? Do you have an approximate, is it going to be Charleston, is it going to be Richmond, Wesley? I'm just curious, what is the geographical region where that power's going to go?
I guess, first of all, at Wesley, as, as will, what will happen here in Coventry, uh, Hopkinton, I forget what project, sorry. Substations don't generate electricity. That's where the power stations do. This just transforms it from a transmission to a distribution level. Wesley, uh, right now is operating with a, a temporary mobile sub that can't remain there. It, it is a temporary situation. Once the answer to this issue is resolved and we have a full build-out of, of this substation here, that will be retired and dismantled as well.
So is that going to be a future site in Wesley?
No, no, no. That will be eliminated. Again, you know, one of, that was an option to rebuild there, but discounted it again because of the issue of the flooding in 2010. We don't want that to occur again.
And Hopkinton would be the only town, let's say, in the Wesley-Cherroh area that would have, have something of this nature? Am I correct?
No.
There, there are a couple of, of substations in, in Charleston. There's the Wood River Substation and the Kenyon Substation. Wood River is just east of the Charleston-Hopkinton line. And there are other substations in Wesley. There's Langworthy and.
Langworthy, which will actually be receiving some upgrades as a result of this project.
The one in Wood River, that's, you can see that from the road, right?
I've never seen it. I'm sorry.
Is it near Wood River Junction? No, I was just curious.
I've flown over it, but I don't, uh, no, no, it's, uh, I believe it's up Shem, Shemona, Cock Hill?
Schmuckinuck Hill.
Yeah. It's easy for you to say.
It's in Coventry.
Very wicked, Buck.
Hope Valley, we've retired as well.
So, so when this sub is built in Hopkinton, Hope Valley's retired in addition to the Ashway sub on, on Oak Hill Road, on Oak Road?
Yeah, I just thought it was important to ask that question of the power, of where it was going to be serviced. As you said, it just transforms it, but in the Wesley site it's undergoing.
Did I hear you say, did I hear you say that the Hope Valley one, down by the ball field, that's going to be dismantled?
Yes. As part of this project.
Are you all set, Scott?
Yes, thank you.
Sandra. Who are finding these first timers have decided they've found their voice.
No, it's not that I found my voice.
Uh-oh.
Sandra Nugent, Ashway Road, just down around the corner from where this proposed site is. I'm listening to what everybody is saying and the answers that are coming back. Now, something that really hasn't been said, which I'd like a little bit of clarification on it. If this has to go in the bottom corner, up the other way, how far away from the property line will these poles get put next to the property, which is Burdick's boatyard? Okay, because that's my concern, and I'm sure it's their concern, but that question was not brought up. So I'm going to walk over to that map and I want to ask, and I can talk loudly enough so everybody can hear me. If it's built down here, we would like to have an idea of how close it would end up coming to this property line here, those poles. Just, just out of a question, you know, because I know that Gary has children, and I know there's other kids here. And if it comes out this way, and I'm going to map him up when it comes to the button, this here field, I've lived here all my life, it's got a lot of water in it. So I'm just asking, and, you know.
With regard to the, again, it's the feeders, it's the distribution that'll be coming out on that side that you're speaking to, that would run along the access road. Access road is probably 20 feet wide. Poles would be on the, uh, farmed land side of that. So they'd be offset maybe another five feet. So from the property line, uh, you're adding another setback of 40 or 50 feet? So you're in the 65-feet range?
So, so the, the road itself has to be 40 feet off the property line?
The, the road itself, I think the setback is 40 feet on the side, 45? Oh, they're not? Okay. I see. Then, then we're, we're at minimum probably 25 feet off of the property line? But I, I want, caution you here again. Those are not the lines that create, uh, perceived health issues. It's the transmission lines that are.
I, I understand what you just said, so as I go. They're also talking how it looks, the home line yards, and the fact that it's the neighbors and how it will come across as that. And they, somebody else just kept saying, "I'm not sure if it's Ash, if this property here that's 60-some acres that's right next to it," that's what they've been asking about, like that, it's not been asked.
I think we're done. Oh, Frank?
Yeah, I just had a question for you. Of the, um, the manufacturing, manufacturing zone, greater than 12 acres, the three parcels that are closest to the KV line, can you just explain why those weren't an option, I guess? I think it might help the, the question about the RE. The, um, the flat 25 lot on, flat 1 lot 13, and flat 3 lot 59.
These three, that one?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
No.
The other's one.
The other's fine. I'm sorry. Yes. Now, these are commercially zoned, manufactured zone properties. Why weren't the three closest to the 115 line, I guess, pursued as far as this project, as I said?
Was these three here?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, the, uh, the, the one in the lower right-hand corner, the southeast corner, we understand is owned by the Hopkinton Land Trust, who's acquired by the Nature Conservancy originally. The one in the southwest corner is the Garrity Manufacturing, uh, that we've spoken about. And I believe this small piece, uh, can't read it from this distance, flat 25 lot.
Lot 1, yeah.
I believe that's the actual line on 20 property.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure. I hadn't asked the question. Okay, thanks.
All right. I want to thank everybody for coming down tonight. The council will make a decision. Do you think we'll be able to do it by our next council meeting? Is there any additional information? All right. Our next council meeting is May, let's see, it's eight, May 21st. So if anyone, if any of you would like to attend that night, you're certainly welcome to do so, to find out how we're going to proceed on this specific project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just need to let everybody know, we've got a long agenda to go through. So if you want to chat, we'd prefer it if you did it outside. Thanks. So we'll give them a few minutes.
Want to take a recess for five minutes?
Yeah, four minutes. Go.
Just call a recess for five minutes?
Yeah, you just got, go. Come on, we're, now, you need to leave, are you, I don't know if you need to, you need to talk to somebody or use a facility? Go right ahead. Yeah, we're good, we're good. We're not going to finish up just yet. Paperwork. Thank you. Good night, Peter.
I was like a dollar, I'm glad everybody's alive.
When they first applied, it was 2009. What I wanted to ask, that's what I asked the environmental board, so to support honoring that whole point, which is part of that, we get a public hearing. Oh, I already asked, asked a little bit, turned it, I asked, I was interested, she said she's going to ask that, you know, she said, you know, she said it was a good thing, she said I'm going to ask, that they were all thinking, you know, absolutely, she said, you know, so I don't need to make the noise in here. It was hot. It was a good, I guess, type of thing. Yeah, that was great. All right.
You just went outside.
Okay, we're going to get back at it. Next up, consent agenda.
Motion to approve Town Council meeting minutes of April 16th, workshop notes of April 9th, budget workshop notes of February 27th, set May 21st, 2012, as a hearing date for a special event permit filed by Ashway Act 1 for a family campout at Grandal Field, set May 21st, 2012, as a hearing date for a special event permit filed by Legends Bar and Grill for motorcycle run fundraiser, accept the following reports, Finance Director, Chief of Police, Animal Control, official.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
I'd like to pull April 16th.
I'd like to pull April 9th.
Usually, we do that before you make the motion, but you can amend it. Would you amend it to remove those? You have to amend the motion.
Make amendment to the motion to remove April 16th.
Is there another one? April 9th? Okay.
Last second, though.
All right, thank you. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, main motion, all in favor of the main motion?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, done. Now, April 16th and April 9th.
I just want to be able to abstain because I was not here.
Right, you weren't here and Barbara wasn't here. The workshop notes of March?
Yeah, I had, I had it from 9th.
Okay, so April 9th for, what's, you weren't here for the 16th?
Yes.
So, both weren't here for the 16th?
Correct.
But you were here for the 9th?
Correct.
Right, okay. So, your question on the 9th?
Page three. Page three, the townwide rental rehabilitation program. I'd like to make a note during that evening, Councilor Kapalbo, State Chief, would have liked this to be the number-one priority, since it's the first time that we are doing anything specifically for our town to rebuild property.
Okay, I'm on page three, I just found it.
Page three.
Right in the middle.
April 9th.
Yeah.
Townwide rental rehabilitation program. I would like to make a note that Councilor Kapalbo stated that she felt, she would like to have, this is the number-one priority, since it's one of the first times we've done something very specific to rehabilitate rental properties for low and moderate income. This one was my priority.
You had to follow up earlier to, to one, to the...
Oh, well, page, page two was...
What, the report?
Yes, April 9th, page, yeah. Nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine lines from the bottom, not including revitalization management. The project fit the state's criteria, not only for income, but also elderly. I just would like it to say, low, moderate income, but also elderly, since you've capitalized income. That's all. That was my note.
Do anybody have anything else? Is there a motion to accept the April 16th and April 9th?
May we hand everyone the end with a correction?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Is there a motion to accept the April 16th?
With corrections, correct.
There were no corrections on that one.
I'll make that a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone abstain?
Me.
We have to abstain, right. Everyone's there.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the April 9th with the correction?
Make a motion.
A second.
With corrections.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Public forum, and anyone like to speak at the first public forum? First up, Town Council President's Report. I just want to note the awards that are going on tonight, for the record. The, the Ashway Grange, number 50, will be presenting awards tonight, which they've been doing since 7:00, for the 2012 community service. And the following people will be recognized, Thomas Algier, Fireman of the Year, he's from the Dunn's Corners Fire Department, John Forbes, Police Officer of the Year, Hopkinton Police, Police Department, Karen Mann, Teacher of the Year, Ashway Elementary, and Thurman Silks, Citizen of the Year, from Ashway. All four have received, all four of these individuals are receiving town-issued certificates tonight at the Grange meeting, and we congratulate them for their community service.
This is a trivia note. Hopkinton has two Grange members, probably the only council in Rhode Island has two Grange members on it, any city or town council. Tom is past master of Ashway Grange, I'm past master of Sun Grange, and I just got my seal from my mother, 70 years, and my uncle, 70 years of Grange members, and I'm very proud of that.
Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda, Town Manager's Report. Phil?
Thank you. First on the agenda is the Washington County Regional Forum and State House Hearing. April 23rd, I attended a Washington County Regional Forum that was held at the Wesley Town Hall. Town Council President Sylvia Thompson and Councillors Barbara Kapalbo and Sky Bill Hurst also attended this event. Governor Lincoln Chaffee made a presentation on his proposed legislative package, intended to offset the losses that municipalities have experienced over the years because of the sizable and significant reduction in state aid in the weak economy. The forum was hosted by the town of Westerly and received widespread media attention. Also, on April 26th and several dates since that, I attended a meeting and, two meetings and a House Finance Committee meeting at the State House to learn more about the legislative package, which we'll speak a little bit more later on this evening. Item number two, over the last seven months, the Town Energy Committee has spent or committed $42,694 out of $50,000 for energy improvements in town buildings. Improvements that have already been completed include two new furnaces and two new garage doors at the Department of Public Works, and a ductless split heating and cooling unit in the Town Clerk's Office. New front door at Thayer House is expected to be completed later this week, and the remainder of the available funding is going to be used to improve lighting at Town Hall and the Clerk's Office. The town received these funds directly from the Rhode Island Office of Energy Resources, and special thanks to Committee Chairman Brad Ward for overseeing this grant, and Laura Kenyon for monitoring these funds. Preparations for contact negotiations and actual contract negotiations with the clerical, professional, technical, and police unions are ongoing at this time. And lastly, on April 26th, Town Planner Jim Lampfier represented the town at the DOT Statewide Planning Transportation Improvement Program hearing at the Department of Administration in Providence. And during that hearing, no public comments were received on any of the town's proposed projects. Thank you.
Are any questions of manager? Okay. Thank you. Old business. We had a, as Bill had mentioned, we did have a meeting before and attended the forum, but everybody's had these resolutions for some time now. What I would like, or I should say, the bills themselves, what I'd like to do is read the resolution that was tailored to Hopkinton, that the governor is, he had sent down a blanket form, and it was revised. Did you do this, Lisa, or did Laurie? Did you?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for getting it done. This is how it reads. Whereas since the beginning of the recession in 2007, cities and towns in Rhode Island have faced an annual challenge in balancing revenue and expenses while continuing to provide basic services. And whereas cuts in state aid to cities and towns have resulted in reduced services accompanied by higher property taxes, and whereas in Hopkinton, the loss of state aid is $1,012,931 each year, from a $227,609 loss of general revenue sharing and a $785,322 loss of motor vehicle tax reimbursements. And whereas, to offset these losses, cities and towns have been asking the state for four years to provide them with the tools to make the spending changes they need to offset the loss of state revenues and to control ever-increasing pension and post-employment benefit costs. And whereas, recognizing the predicament of municipalities, Governor Chaffee has submitted a package of legislation to help municipalities resolve their financial problems and begin the process of recovery and financial stability. And whereas, the back, the package of bills include legislation authorizing highly distressed communities to eliminate mandates and effect collective bargaining agreements and binding arbitrations. Legislation reducing disability pensions for employees to 50% of their current pay for those who can perform other employment. Legislation order authorizing cities and towns to limit pension benefits for new and non-vested employees and locally-administered pensions to the benefits paid to employees in the state-administered municipal system. Legislation authorizing municipalities with a locally-administered pension to suspend cost-of-living adjustments if the pension is less than 60% funded and after certain findings are made. Legislation requiring that all school districts implement a school budget model approved by the Commissioner of Education, and providing that the Department of Education shall monitor school spending in at-risk districts throughout the year. Legislation providing that supplemental appropriations for the payment of past annual school department expenditures would not be included in a municipality's maintenance of effort. Legislation changing the dates and percentages of payments for foundation-level school support and approving expenditures and also for payment of distressed community aid. And whereas, the Hopking Town Council believes that passage of this legislative package is in the best interest of the town. That's how it reads. Who would like to start?
I have a couple courses.
I'm going to start it then, and we'll work our way around. How's that? Because we started that way. Go for it. Oh, you want to? Okay.
Just get back to me, that's all.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Bill, I looked over this somewhat, and how does this actually help town Hopkinton? Specifically, legislation authorizing municipalities with locally-administered pensions to spend, suspend cost-of-living adjustments if the pension is less than 60% funded. Are either of our pensions under 60% funded?
Well, the vast majority of this proposed legislation does not specifically help the town of Hopkinton. Hopkinton is not a highly distressed community. It has those issues with the regionals, the regional charahole system. How this would really help Hopkinton would be in, for example, like the police officers who currently retire at, on a disability at 66 and 2/3% would be reduced to 50% of the disability pension if they can work other employment. This legislation is really geared towards the cities in Rhode Island, the larger cities, Providence, Pawtucket, Wunsucket, and also the town of West Warwick, because they qualify as highly distressed communities. The reason why this was a statewide initiative that came out of the governor's office is basically, like, we're all in this together. For example, Hopkinton, as well as many other cities and towns in Rhode Island, are all going to suffer if Providence files for receivership. And the reason for that is because, you know, the attempts that the state makes and the funds that they have to afford those cities that go into receivership are all going to be funds that will eventually not go to the other cities and towns in Rhode Island. So, this is really an effort by the vast majority, if not all, of the town managers, the town administrators, and the mayors in Rhode Island, to support the larger cities to help them get back on their feet, which in turn will have an indirect positive effect on the, on the smaller cities and towns in Rhode Island.
Well, after reading this, everything is concerning distressed communities. And what kind of upsets me is we're losing money, a million dollars every year, when our pensions are funded above 60%. We're losing money left and right from the states, because these other communities just didn't do their due diligence as we have here in Hopkinton. The thing about the schools, I mean, it doesn't even help us. And, I don't know, I just, I have some very big reservations on this whole package.
Well, let me just say that the 227,000 of general revenue and the 785,000 of lost motor vehicle tax reimbursements has really, really no bearing on this legislation. That's just the money of state aid that we've lost.
Money that the state of Rhode Island promised the municipalities and then went back on their word. Just like, I mean, I've heard it from day one, where we're going to bring in the lottery because that's going to pay for education. Where's it go? It goes into the general fund. They started this thing with the, the car motor vehicle tax, the first $6,000, we were getting the money from that. That's gone. It just, you've got to remember, Rhode Island stops at exit 6. It always has, for as long as I can remember. I mean, anybody that lives in South County always knows, once you get down past exit 6, you're in your own land. I just, I don't know, I just have, I've heard too many false promises from the state and the people who, our taxes are high. But in the six years that I've been sitting on this council, I realize how hard our hands are tied to do much more than what we can. And to just to give more of this money to the other cities and towns, I mean, the state of Rhode Island pays for Central Falls schools. They pays for, they pay for the other two vocational schools. I mean, let's, if you want to start going down the road, you know, let's look at the whole picture here. And if they want to share, if we're all in this together, then let's share the wealth.
Well, I think the purpose of, I'm not arguing the loss of the state aid, that's, that's crystal clear. It's over a million dollars to the town of Hopkinton. What this proposed legislation is geared to do is to provide, enable the legislation for the cities and towns, to give them the tools so that they can better balance their budget. And it's geared towards, like I said, the big cities that are in trouble so that they can unilaterally amend their collective bargaining agreements and do other things in order to, you know, right that balance. That's not going to benefit the town of Hopkinton because our pensions, our municipal-side pension for the non-polices at about 80%, and for the police is about 118%. So...
We're funded.
We're properly funded. It's really to benefit the larger cities and towns in the state.
I have to, in reference to what you brought up, Tom, and Bill answered on the disability, there were two others that I thought benefited Hopkinton. That was number six, and that had to do with the School Spending Accountability Act, that the legislation, that the, that the legislation grants new powers to the Rhode Island Department of Ed to oversee this uniform budget.
But continue reading.
Mm-hmm. The, well, let me start at the top. This legislation creates new reporting and oversight requirements to ensure that accountability and transparency exist in schools funding, in school funding. Current law requires all public school districts... Current law requires all public school districts to use a uniform chart of accounts, thereby providing a standardized accounting system across all communities. The legislation, this legislation builds on that effort and requires a standardized budget format and promotes best practices for all school districts. The Rhode Island Department of Education would have more control over this budget. And, of course, the part that's the kicker is if the, if the school didn't cooperate with them, they would withhold state funding, I mean, state education funding. Of course, that would hurt us, state aid. So it is a little bit of a twist there, but I'm sure that if this is something that is required of Charahoe, Charahoe's going to have to do it. They're not going to not want to get funding. If we don't get our aid, we can't pay. The other one that helped us
Excuse me, what number?
That's number six. Bill number six. Look at the bill itself.
I'm looking at our resolution. That's what we're, that's what we're asking to pass.
Yeah, we have this.
Right. Well, we also have
Do you have a bill number?
These are, okay. What I'm, we were all given the legislative package, which included the details and pages of every specific single. Now, we've got a resolution that can be modified, but I'm talking about the actual bills themselves and what they do. Number, that was number six I was just talking about. Bill had already talked about number two, which they're marked at the top, which was the disability pension reform. That would help us. The other one that would help us is, let's see, number, yeah, there was another one. Let me find it. Oh, the Basic Education Aid will, the, we're going to receive aid sooner in the summer, a bigger percent than we did before. And they're going to change the percents. It is in the month of, it's going to increase.
August.
What's that, August?
August.
Yeah. It's, it's a lower amount in the summer, just as we pay a lower amount to Charahoe, but what they're going to do is change to August to give it a bigger amount. So finance is going to get more state aid earlier than having to wait for September, where you get the big lump of 9%. So they're going to have to back off the 9 and 1/2%. So I saw that as a benefit. So are these dramatic changes? These are little changes. So I saw three bills that specifically could assist us. Now, the rest of them, and as a package together, as Bill had pointed out, are only going to make the other communities that are having a problem healthier, or giving them the tools to make themselves healthier. So we can get into that, but I'll, I just wanted to point that out. Frank, do you have anything?
Yeah. You know, I just want to mention to my fellow councils, this is an endorsement of the governor's municipal stability package. It's not, we're not, we're not approving laws, we're not, we're just endorsing his proposal. Anytime that the state is willing to yield to the towns, town governments, managers, to have more control over their own budgets, I'm all for it. I don't know why we're wrestling with this thing. It just, it just amazes me. But I wanted to point out one thing. You know, if one of these distressed communities goes belly up, it's going to be very difficult to us as a town to attract new businesses at exit one and two. You know, forget about it. We're going to get less money from the state, it's going to create a lot of problems. And this is really just an endorsement. And again, I just don't know why we're wrestling with it. You know, obviously, it doesn't address specifically a lot of the issues we have with the Charahoe and the, you know, the education issues that we have as a tri-town community, but, you know, no particular resolution can encompass everything. So, you know, I know, I wish it did encompass more, but Sylvia did point out a couple of facts that does help out with regard to schools and having the education folks approve their budgets if it comes to it. But like I said, anytime that we are given more authority to take control and control our own destiny with regards to budgets, we may not be distressed now, we may not be ever, but if we ever are, you better bet your booty, I'd love to have something like this, to be able to say, hey, stop the cold, stop this, stop that. So, you know, again, I just hope that every one of my fellow councils will sponsor this because I think it's very important to send a message to the state. Thank you.
Barbara?
I thought you were going to do Scott, because you were starting with that end. I will happily speak if Scott doesn't want to.
He yielded, so we'll go back, back to Scott.
I can talk, or she can talk.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Okay. I don't have a problem with the resolution either, Frank, in all fairness. However, I'd like to point out that although we lost $1 million, Hopkinton lost $1 million, it was across the board, across the state, every town lost 10%. Our 10% was $1,012,000. Providence's 10% was $25 million. So everyone lost across the board, not just Hopkinton for $1 million. It was an across-the-board cut, and the motor vehicle tax reimbursement was an across-the-board statewide cut as well. Everyone got it, not just us. First of all, in all fairness, this will probably fail. We can pass it all we'd like, but when it gets down to the legislatures, my guess is that legally it'll fail. It is specifically regarding five communities, not the other 34, and probably legally that would be a problem, that we're all not involved. It's not, it really is for, as you pointed out, for the highly distressed communities and not communities like Hopkinton that not only is in the black, we have run our budgets well, we are frugal, and we have always done that, as have any number of other communities. So I understand what the governor is trying to do, because he is right. If any of those major cities fail, as Frank has said too, it is a major problem for Hopkinton in an economic, not only all of our citizens who work in Providence, but for bringing in businesses. And I do think that anything that helps us have more control over portions of our budget, we need to support as best we can. So I am certainly in favor of this. I do understand where you're coming from, and when I spoke to the governor, I said the same thing. You are punishing us for giving you good budgets in the black and taking care of our citizens. And we are supporting specifically the five distressed communities, which for 10 to 20 or 30 years have been running their budgets in the red, and they have been disasters even without the loss of state aid. So overall, I understand what he's trying to do. I am willing to certainly help him as best I can by following the town managers of the different towns' suggestion. Ultimately, I don't think it'll pass.
Scott?
First of all, I do have reservations about this, and I did ask the governor some questions. And I think what you really have to ask is, what is really missing? And it's not only this package, but other legislation, is that the state seems to not want to address the problems of regional school districts and the town councils within them. And they never come up with a mechanism. If you're going to hold a town council responsible for a school budget and regional school district, you should come up with a mechanism that they can be, implement institutionally, and that is not forthcoming. And even the governor admitted it was a difficult subject because he didn't have an answer. And the governor has the staff that does all the research and all, et cetera, for his legislation. The, and I've been very big on management studies about Charahoe, but we have some towns that run very good, we have some that are not run so good. And a lot of it is the public's fault. I, you know, we have a town in Rhode Island that multiple council people went to prison. I mean, the body politic should not condone what they do in some parts of Rhode Island. I will correct Tom, and it's a misconception everybody knows on the lottery, because it was recently in the Journal, supposed lottery wasn't promised for education, and a lot of people have a misconception, but that was recently in the paper. And a lot of people think that, but that was just in, I believe, the Province Journal. The problem is, I mean, it was, I know it's well-known, the Rhode Island State Constitution is very specific, the General Assembly for all its education. Doesn't say they have to fund it, but it's right there in black and white if you read the state constitution. And they don't seem to really want to solve the problems that councils face in regional school districts. I'd like to support the governor. I don't like to be contrary, and I'll probably support this thing. But I would hope that this council, because I've brought it up at Charahoe meetings, and since no other towns and regional school districts have done it, that we really look at a resolution, getting the state to recognize the specific dilemma that town councils have in regional school districts, and how we are held accountable to a budget cap, which we have no control over, the bottom line of a school budget, like a single town, they recently have legislation about that. They also have one about contracts, councils approving school contracts, and I didn't read the legislation, but I believe, in fact, I did call one of the sponsors. The council, if you're going to hold a town council or any government body accountable, they have to have the prerogative to be accountable, which they don't have. So I certainly am not critical of Councilor Buck, because he brings up very legitimate issues and concerns. And I think that, and I, but the lottery thing has recently been corrected, and it's been a long thought, that it was supposed to be for education, but that's been, it was recently in the Journal. And it's not a criticism of Tom, because that's been out there for a long time.
Not taking as criticisms. I've been wrong in the past.
No, but I'm just saying, it's been out there, and it's been accepted as gospel, and it was recently in the paper, and they said that there was no promise. I think the lottery director, Jerry Alvin, said that. But I'm really disappointed that it didn't recognize, because, you know, when you give political support, and this is a government's legislative package, and towns and school districts have legislative packages, and different officials have legislative packages, we should have something returned, or some understanding. We have a governor presently that doesn't seem to listen to Hopkins, didn't, you know, really come up with a solution when I mentioned the problems of regional school district. And we're also, and his director of transportation was still talking about a toll in Hopkins, and you might say, well, that's relevant, but it deals with finances, financial revenue. And I do have some current concerns. I'll probably go along with it, but I would hope that this council, or maybe Councilor Buck would work with me, or one other council, I don't want to break the open meetings law, and make reading from up the resolution, getting the state to recognize the specific dilemma that town councils have in regional school districts. I mean, and
Back to the package. I gave you a really long rope, but what about, anything else about the governor's package? Are you done?
I think I made most of my notes. Thank you. Was I that long-winded?
Thank you.
What day is it?
All right. Now, listen, I remember a few years back when Newport wanted the America's Cup back, and it asked for, for support throughout Rhode Island. And I don't know how many communities did that, but we supported their resolution to bring it back, and we supported their efforts. If Newport is healthier, you know, it affects us all. And where are they driving through to get there, right to 138? But anyway, as far as assisting other communities, I'm, these, this doesn't hurt, I see this as helpful, and it's been said already that if we can find a way, and it happens to be, I believe, through this specific package to help, and if the legislative folks tinker with it, fine, but I hope that something here goes forward, because we don't want Providence to end up like Central Falls. Central Falls, we pay 100% of the education. We don't want to pay 100% of Providence's education either. So those are my final comments. Is there any, anything else anybody wants to add? Are there any motions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to support the Governor's Chapea's municipal stability package.
Is there a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed?
That's you, or give me.
Okay. That's done.
Yes, I voted aye, okay? Don't expect me to feel good about it.
All right. Thank you. New business. Town of Richmond has requested a couple of things. One of them, and they involve the Charahoe Act, one of them is, they would like to see school committee members go down to, have two-year terms.
Actually, I would like to table these next two items until after Charleston comes forth. I mean, no, they haven't. Not yet.
They sent an email, I asked them, they sent an email that they, they continued it to another meeting, so, oh, no, that's us.
That's not.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Hi, Amy. Oh, our council. Oh, so
That's Mrs. Lyne.
Oh, this is a difference. This is a different one. What is it? Hi, ladies, blah, 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 blah. Charleston town unanimously opposed. Oh, they, oh, I saw the earlier email. There's a latest one. So they unanimously opposed the Town of Richmond's resolution for the two, two-year terms. That's the one, they didn't have the other one on the agenda. The two-year term they're opposed to. Okay, so Charleston did decide. Oh, thank you.
Did they take a stand on the second one?
That didn't, that was an on their, that was something, well, anyway, let's deal with the first one first. So I guess we were okay to go forward then.
I'd like to make a motion that we also oppose the two-year terms for the school committee members.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And we happen to have a school committee member here tonight.
Oh, yes.
Would you like to tell us what you think about it?
Dorothy Gardner. My sense is, is that two years is not enough. To understand how the system works at Charahoe requires a lot of study. I mean, just going through the budget on one year, you probably don't get the full depth of it. And there are many questions that need to be asked during the school committee meetings, and it takes a long time to completely assimilate the nuances of how this school system is run. So I would suggest that you continue with the four-year, rather than putting it down to two-year. Now, that's
I read in the paper, you guys voted on this.
Pardon?
You voted, the school committee voted on this topic.
That's correct. The school committee voted to oppose.
And it was unanimous, that was, that was in the paper?
Yes.
Thank you. Scott?
First of all, I believe that the voters should have a right to vote whether they want to have a two-year term. Now, I understand some of the arguments before that council, not council, but school committee member Gardner made, but I think it's important to note that school committee members have more power than town council people to impact the tax rate. And it's around, it varies from town to town. Richmond's over 80%. We're around 75, and Charleston, it's high 60s. So I think that should be debated and let the voters decide. I think the political reality is on the school committee that most people don't run for the school committee. And we've had a lot of people run as write-ins. And I think that the merits of that should be discussed in the election and let the voters decide. The, and you can make a case for four-year term, and you can make a case for two-year term. If you have school committee members who virtually, or frequently, get elected unopposed, it doesn't help the system at all. We have a town council, Richmond, in the area, that went to a town council term of four years, and now they're considering going back to two years. But I think that the people should debate the two-year term, and the people should have a chance to weigh in on it. And
Tom? Do you have anything?
I mean, what do you have to say?
You have anything yet? Okay.
That's why the electors elect us, to make these tough decisions.
Well, you're sitting here, and the school committee is sitting over there.
No, right there.
Yes, yes. But I'm done in November.
Actually, I agree with Scott. I have no opposition to two-year terms for school committee members. I would like to see a lot more people come out for school committee, and we just don't have enough. And I think if it's a two-year term, there's a good chance you might get more people coming out for it. I also think, whether you're running for town council or you're running for school committee, if you are interested in that position, you go to those meetings so that when you get there, you hit the ground running, because it is complex. I have no problems with a two-year term. Those of us, we have put on that that had to immediately start, they came up with immediate ideas. I have watched Charleston as a new person. He's one of the few that constantly has ideas. Deb Carney hit the ground running, and she had ideas from the very beginning. I have no problems at all with two-year terms for school committee members. I also do agree that because this is the charter for Charahoe, and it is a Charahoe Act revision, that it should go in front of the, in front of the electors. However, I have no problems at all with two-year terms.
Frank, you have anything, Dan?
Yeah, no, just that with the complexity of the Charahoe budget, as Doc Gardner has mentioned, it just, it's, it's very complex, and it takes a long time to digest it. And I just think two-year terms would not be, would not serve the public well. So I think I'd love to just keep it at the four years. I think they need the time to digest everything and, and make good committee members.
Lisa? I had, I had said something at the, at a workshop when we talked about this. And I wanna, for the record, the Town of Richmond, or I should say, out of the Town of Richmond, at the last election, I shouldn't even, well, anyway, at a, at a previous election, the council president of Richmond contacted the council president in Hopkinton and wanted Hopkinton's assistance in defeating someone that was running, a Hopkinton person who was running for school committee, and said that if, if we could keep that person from getting elected, we'd get to keep the superintendent, because if that person did get elected, the superintendent would quit. So, when I see that out of Richmond, we get two-year terms, I can't help but, that's the first thing that I think of, is that this is a way to try to get rid of people. So anyway, that's one reason I'm not in favor of it. I just don't like it. But the, the main reason is, people run for the office, and the term has nothing to do with it. They're, they're committed to run for some reason. It's got to do with taxes, or they've got kids in the system, whatever it is. You run for office because you, you've decided you've got the time, and the, the length of the term has nothing to do with it. Like, when you got your stipend, everybody gets a stipend, and all of a sudden a check arrived in the mail, and you're like, what is this?
I had no idea.
You didn't run for office to, to, to collect a little stipend.
I'm gonna forget that.
So those are the reasons that, that I'm not for it. So... Barbara, you had another comment?
Yeah. One of the things, you know, when we talk about the budget for the school department, as a town councillor, we're expected to be on top of it the moment we get here. We are expected to comment on it the moment, the first year we are on town council. And we do. This council has been very good at doing that, no matter when it is. And I think if you know you're going to run up against something that's complex and difficult, then you just spend more time so that you can ask. I think the idea that it is so much more special is not of value. And, you know, some of the issues on whether we're trying to get a person in or out of office, it's just more gossip. And I can't guarantee that it occurred or didn't occur, but it seems like gossip. So I am still interested in having the citizens of the town make that decision via the Charahoe Act revision, not certainly the council's.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to say, I can see the debate on both sides of the issue, but one thing that hasn't been said about the school committee, the, I think the town councils, generally speaking, have shown more of an interest in the financial impact of Charahoe budgets. And the Charahoe School Committee, although I know they made a reduction in this year's budget, and if they have to face the voters every two years, when they propose budgets which are controlled by the means of effort principle, they will think more, probably, they are more likely to think before they vote for particular budgets, if they have to count to the voters. That's another aspect.
Tom, did it happen? Or is it gossip?
It's a fact.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard on this? Or Dottie, did you have another comment?
I just have one question. Is it gossip, or is it truth?
I don't know.
I just asked Tom.
It's truth.
It's truth.
Then you can give us names, dates, and places.
No, I'm not gonna do that.
Why should we have to do that?
I know, because otherwise...
Well, you just did, right. He's the council president, so there you go.
How about if we selected John Buck?
Yeah, okay.
It was...
It's brought up.
Because the person who was going to resign, you know, was personally elected.
He didn't resign. No, the person was elected and he did not resign. So I guess he thought better of it. But I don't know that he had anything to do with it anyway. So, okay. Any other comments from anybody? Our motion's been made, second. Anyone, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Anyone opposed?
No, I'm against this motion.
Right. Is it, is it a vote, or is it a consensus? I don't see a vote on the agenda. I assume it's a consensus.
I just voted no on the motion to...
Well, no, no, I'm just asking.
The way the agenda's written, can we vote on this?
It is.
What was the Town of Richmond request?
They were asking, they asked us to consider going from four-year terms to two-year terms.
Well, I think you're okay.
But it doesn't say vote.
I understand, but it says Town of Richmond request, if the request was that you support it, then it's okay to take it all.
Okay. The motion, you wanna repeat it? Or Lisa, I should ask you.
... made by Councilor, Duncan Secred by Councilor Lynn Dolphy to oppose two-year terms.
To oppose two-year terms.
And all in favor to oppose two-year terms?
Aye.
Yes. Anyone against going to two-year terms? Then you would vote no.
Why don't we start again, so I know what I'm doing, and it's gonna get me confused.
Okay. Lisa?
... made by Councilor Buck and Secred by Councilor Lynn Dolphy to oppose the two-year terms of school committee efforts. That's the motion on the table.
All right, so it's shall the council oppose two-year terms?
And three people voted yes, we oppose two-year terms.
And two of us voted no.
And two, two vote no, because you oppose two-year terms. Okay. All right.
And we're not opposed to two-year terms.
You opposed to the motion. Excuse me.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, next up, three-member representation per town on the school committee?
Make a motion that we continue the Charahoe Act as it is presently written, as one man, one vote.
Okay. Different way to look at it. Any discussion?
Yes, there is. I think there's two issues here. Number one, since the Charahoe School Committee consists of 11 members, would, do we think a little balancing would be appropriate? Because some people think 11 is still unwieldy, which I don't have a problem with going down to nine. The legal problem is, and I'm not a lawyer, obviously, is the fact that I don't think you can mandate three members per town. It would be likely because of the population of the three towns, or you'd end up being three from each town. But I think the wording should be a little different on this, because it should be a nine-member school committee. They have a formula in the Charahoe Act, how they determine how one town remains at three, which Richmond has, and the other two towns have four.
It would require a change of the charter.
Yeah.
It would require...
Yeah. But I don't have a problem with a nine-member school committee. It's just that to say that each town has three and mandate it, I don't think legally you would have a problem with that. Not with a nine-member committee.
Any other discussion? Barbara?
I don't have a problem with the three-member representation for town and school committee. Since we are dealing with requests from Town of Richmond for the Charahoe Act revisions, I don't have a problem with a nine-member board. I think it would be far more usable than an 11-member. I think our amount of students is very similar, and I think having three per town is perfectly acceptable. Again, I think that should go up to the electors, and since it's a Charahoe Act revision, so if it would come about, it should be put to the vote of the town citizens. But I have no problem with it.
Yeah, so currently, as it stands now, Charleston has four, can have four members. Hopkinton can have four members. And Richmond has three members per the census, and, in the recent census count, and that's the way it was the last census count. If we went to three members, we'd be going from four down to three. I like, I'm, I'm glad that we just happen to be one of the communities that has four representatives. I don't always agree with all four, but I'm glad we have four, because we're one town that sometimes pays the most, and for most of the years pays the most. So if we can have four members, then I'm happy. I'm, I'm sorry that Richmond only has three, because they pay the second most, most of the time. So, but I represent Hopkinton, so that's why I'm opposed to it. Any other comments? Does anyone from the public want to add anything? About, Dottie? I wasn't sure if you were saying so long, or...
Yep. Well, my, my concern here is, is why would you want to give up your representation, particularly when you're paying more than the other towns most years? You know, you've earned it. That's your right. Why do you wanna give that away? It would make absolutely no sense. You know, if you're paying lion's share of the bill, as I said, some years, most years, I, I don't think that you should give up your representation, which is based on the enrollment, which is also based on the percentage that you pay. It's kind of like, you know, he who pays saves.
Thank you. Barbara have something else?
The only prob, I was gonna say, the only problem with that is Charleston pays the least and has four. And they've always paid the least and have four. It doesn't sort of work on the other side, which is unfortunate.
I'm hoping it pays.
Yeah. Yeah, and as Charleston would point out, the town pays, the town pays, the Town of Charleston pays more. It's the taxpayers who pay less. It's, it's just so strange, but the town actually pays more. Even after state aid, they pay more.
I'm not ready to join you.
No, 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 I like things just the way they are. Wait, Frank had one comment.
What was that?
Well, if you could hold on.
Did you clarify, I guess, the motion that you made?
Oh, that's Lisa to reread it.
... made by Councilor Duncan Secred by Councilor Lynn Dolphy to continue the Charahoe Act as it's currently written, one man, one vote.
Okay. This is currently the way it is.
Yeah, exactly.
Which reiterates your point. Okay.
I guess we're all done. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
Opposed?
I wanna vote in favor.
Okay, you're in favor. All right.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
I didn't move quick enough.
All right. Well, you're in there now. All right. Next up, South County Tourism Council. Barbara?
I'm a member of the board on the South County Tourism Council, and I've been, one thing I want to do on the board is encourage them to pay attention to not just the beach communities, but Hopkinton, Exeter, Richmond, the inside communities that are interested in pristine water, canoeing, hiking, horseback riding, pristine areas, Audubon Society birds. I would like them to not only encourage people to go to the beaches, but when they're at the beaches, to take a nice day off and come onto the inland area. South County Tourism does very, very well. They won the gold and bronze at the NATJA Travel Media Competition. They have won the gold about six times in 10 years. And this is national. It is a national competition. They do an enormously good work, and their marketing is really excellent. When they put out the book, the South County Tourism book, for, for our area, for the Washington County area in particular, because it's South County, they have a really beautiful area on Hopkinton as well. The Conservation Commission is trying to do Hopkinton outdoors. The Land Trust is trying to put out more tracks, more hikes. We're trying to get some of that on the website. So I'm hoping that if we can encourage South County Tourism with this letter of, a similar, a similar letter of congratulations, that they will also work strongly for our benefit through the things that I know our town is trying to do. The letter is simply to extend congratulations to the South County Tourism Council for winning the gold for its mobile website and bronze for the South County Style Vacation Planner in the 2011 North American Travel Journalists Association Annual Awards Competition, recognizing that the council is the best of the best in travel writing, photography, and promotion that cover all aspects of the travel industry worldwide. They have won six times in 10 years nationally. They are just really excellent, and I would like to also send a letter of congratulations, and an encouragement that they continue to look at Hopkinton outdoors, and our land trust, and our hikes.
Make the motion.
It's more of a consensus, I think, than a motion. I don't think it's a true motion.
I agree, I agree.
Here's a letter. Thank you. Yeah, I looked them up online and started reading about, how long have you been on? Just this year?
Only just this year. Yeah, only just this year.
It's great. It's nice to have them on our side.
So we're gonna send it?
Yeah, I just, I actually wrote it up ahead of time.
Okay. What does it say?
Go ahead, read it.
This is addressed to Bernard George, President of the South County Tourism Council. Give Mr. George congratulations to your organization for being recognized a second time by the North American Travel Journalists Association. Your visitor's guide is the best of the best and the types of tourists to explore. Photography of each of the 11 towns and highlights is spectacular. The Hopkinton Town Council is a contributor of your efforts and wishes you continued success as you endeavor to promote some of your...
Yeah, the pictures were really, really nice, of every town.
Really nice. And they're really from the town.
Yeah, I know.
You know, they're really...
It really is the stone wall, or the corner, you know?
Exactly. The part of Hopkinton really is the real thing.
Yep.
It's not a fake picture.
Okay, next up, word of bids. Phil? Are you...
Just a test.
That's all right.
You're leaving to her.
Come on up, Tim.
We just wanted you to stand up at the mic, that's all.
We're gonna let you have a nice stretch, you know?
All right. Y'all got the information for the packets, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I don't think it is.
Oh, no, it's not. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was right here.
But that's okay. Can you tell us about it?
Tell us about it.
Oops.
I didn't.
Can you just tell us?
No, you're just gonna have to fill us in.
Okay. Do you want me to just tell it to you?
Sure. Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, we get the bids back for three things we bid out. One of them was for waste removal. I've already, we had, one, two, three, five different people bid on it. Waste management was the best price at $290, which is what I would recommend. I mean, I have the thing here for you. Sorry I didn't get to pack it out. $290, $290 a month. CWPM bid out $330. RPE bid out $355. Sam Piccolo Jr. and son bid out $460. And Easy Waste bid out $649.50. Okay. The other bid we had was for chip sealing roads. We had three bids on that, I believe. Yeah. We had Comer Contracting, which we bid by the yard, by the yard is what we bid it, at approximately 63,000 yards for the road that we had decided. And one of the roads is gonna be double chip sealed with half-inch stone. The Comer's price for that would be $108,702, and it was bid out at $1.63.8 cents per yard for the 3/8 stone, and $1.62 for the half-inch stone. And it totaled out it to be $108,702, which was the cheapest price. New England Asphalt was $1.71.5 cents per yard for the 3/8, $1.69 for the half-inch chipstone, with a total of $113.71, $791. And Allstate Asphalt was $229 for the 3/8 chipstone, and $229 for the half-inch stone, with a total of $152,056.
And you recommended...
Comer. The price was cheaper. They've done a good job in the past, so we just recommend we're right.
When will they start, then?
I've gotta talk to them. They had originally said... They had originally said, whoever, I talked to a couple of them, they said it'll probably be toward the end of June, if we're ready for that, so we're trying.
Which road had to be, needs to be double?
Church Street.
Oh, yeah. Yes, been a long time.
Okay. And the last bid was for the winter sand. We had two bids, one, there's two different bids. One is price per ton, delivered, and the other's price per ton picked up. And we had two companies that bid for it, Marone Truckings and Sand and Gravel. They bid $1,295 per ton, delivered, $795 per ton picked up. And Rawson Materials, $1,565 per ton, delivered, and $9 per ton picked up. Marone has always done, we've done good business with them in the past, they're local, and the price of $795 as compared to $9. To me, it's a no-brainer on that one. And we sent out eight different flyers, as well as putting the ad in the paper for the sand, and these are the only two we got back.
Barbara? I just have a question, I wanted to go backwards. The chip seal overlay, what roads are you planning on doing, and they're planning on starting this near the end of June, which sounds to me really good, because all the buses should finish with all the children from school. So that's probably a good time, but Church Street is one, what are the other roads?
I don't have the list with me right now. I know one's gonna be West Street, Hill Street, Nicholas Lane, Collins Road, the part from Maxon Street down to the Four Corners.
Die Hill, Tim.
No.
Die Hill's a different kind of problem.
Die Hill needs work, but to chip seal it would be a waste of money. It's major work, and we really can't do it. What we're gonna try to do is patch together the best we can throughout the year until we can do something major to that road. I'm afraid it's never-
I was going to an abyss.
It's easy to do.
Don't go to my house, it's an abyss right outside. Right outside the driveway, Joe.
Thank you, Tim. So if you want, you could make a motion to award these bids as recommended by our Hopkinton DPW.
I'll make a motion that we award the bids as our Department of Public Works Director Tim Tepstra suggested.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Workshop dates. Oh, by the way, Barbara, I'm Barbara. Pat, if you'd like to leave, go right ahead, because we have only got, we have nothing, we're just gonna schedule all these meetings, and if we need you, we'll either tell you. But you might as well leave.
Okay, I wrote down some that I have conflict.
All right, well, let's start in the, in the beginning. So anyway, the, we have a variety of things that are gonna end up on our plate, and I, well, the beginning should be June, I think, but I just, you must know kinda, I mean, I understand something could come up and you might need to go away, but basically, what I'm looking for is some workshop dates that we can schedule out every month. If we can tag anything onto a council meeting, if it's gonna be short, we'll do that. But if I've got dates, and the other good thing about having a variety of dates is it lets the planning board, with their schedules, tell us when it works with them and it works with us to meet. So I'm not sure when, what will be the ideal date for them. So we're gonna start with June, and we're just gonna see when the building's available and find out if we're all available. Let me get to June.
I do have a question for Lisa.
Go ahead.
What is, what is the three filing deadline because, for candidates? And the reason I ask that is, I'm, by sharing with the Republican Town Committee, and I'm always concerned about having a forum, which always, when is the filing deadline? Because, yeah, because some of us are on Town Committee.
The last week, the last week, in June.
What is the date?
I wanna say it's 26th, 28th.
I think you're right.
Okay, here we are in June.
So these are workshops for what?
These are workshops that we're gonna, we're gonna be looking at.
In conjunction planning?
Their first one is, well, maybe the first one, yeah, we need to meet with the planning board, we need a couple of workshops, we might need more dates, however needed. They've started their work, you know why, they've started their work with Conference of Plans. So they need, they're ready to meet with us, and we have to, of course, get, is there information you need to get to us as soon as possible? Whatever it is the planning board wants, has done, you need to get it to us as soon as possible, so we can start reviewing it. Okay, so, let's see, first week of June, we're meeting on the 4th. What's JHB? Oh, that's Juvenile.
How many meetings are we looking at?
We're looking, I'm looking to hear, many. I'm looking to hear what's possible, and we're not gonna schedule a workshop for every possible. I'm looking for possible dates that we can meet for workshops, whenever possible. Now, first one up, possibility is, we've got a meeting on June 4th. Do we wanna meet on the 7th? Do we wanna offer that to the planning board? Or do you wanna put it off to the next week, which is June 11th? That's a Monday.
I prefer to avoid that.
That's why, that's why we're here, just to find out.
If we look at Mondays-
I prefer Mondays.
That is a Monday, June 11th, okay.
Well, I got a meeting I'm gonna miss.
All right, June-
No, I'm just saying, Sylvie, if we schedule all of our meetings that we need on Mondays, then we all know it's Monday, we're not missing a date, we're used to going out on Mondays anyway.
Sure, we'll try and try to do that. Okay.
Try and do a workshop.
Well-
We may need more than that.
We're gonna need more than that, absolutely.
And the problem is, if it's all Mondays, then anyone who wants to take a long weekend, Friday to Monday, we're not gonna be able to.
We're gonna have to go through this little exercise.
I think Mondays are certainly a possibility, but there's gotta be other dates as well.
It's not, wait a minute, let's just start with what we, my intention was. My intention is to pick the dates. We'll try to do Mondays, but we're gonna have to go over this, because there are meetings that we're gonna need aside from the planning board, and that business, and I don't know how long or how many meetings that'll take, there are some other things that we have to get to.
I have a conflict on June 11th.
Okay.
June 11th, I got a conflict.
Okay, so June 11th, you absolutely can't go. If it's a planning board workshop, you're not gonna be able to go.
Why don't you put a tentative, and I'll find out by the next meeting?
All right.
This should be on the agenda for our next meeting.
Now, the other, the other possibility for that week is, the building is free on the 13th, the building is free on the 14th, so that's a Wednesday or a Thursday.
It doesn't matter to me.
I goes-
It's so far out, I don't even know.
Okay, so the 13th or 14th is also possible, one or the other.
I prefer the 14th.
Is June 12th, is that the referendum date?
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah, does that cause a problem for you with the 11th? Come to think of it?
We try and set up a meeting date with the meeting.
Right, okay, so the 11th for that reason, it should not happen, because that conflicts, thank you, with the referendum. Okay, so now we'll look to the 13th or the 14th. Does it matter Wednesday or Thursday?
13th, I got the blood of the historical society.
Okay, so we'll go with June 14th as the first workshop date, all right. Following week, the 19th, we need to move our meeting to, because the 18th is graduation. Let me write that in right now, Town Council, 19th. All right. The next, now, the zoning board is there, okay. The following week, the Town Hall is, we have a Monday available, the 25th, June 25th.
What date is that on?
That's a Monday.
Monday.
June 25th, all right. Well, that was it for June. How far out did you go with these? It was very convenient to see everything written on. Isn't that nice? All right, next up, July. All right, we've got Independence Day, we got Town Council meeting the second. All right, the following week, we've got available June 9th, which is a Monday, uh, July 9th, excuse me. Does that sound okay to anybody for possible? Okay, July 9th. And we also have available the 11th or 12th, that's a Wednesday or a Thursday. Do you have problems with Wednesdays?
Second, Wednesdays use at Hopkinton historical society.
Okay, so we could go to the 12th, then, there's nothing on, July, July 12th, all right, July 12th's another date. After that, we've got-
What's July 12th?
It's a Thursday. After that, we've got July 23rd, which is a Monday. Is that available?
July 30th?
July 23rd?
23rd.
Now, we're not gonna be meeting every single one of these.
At the moment, they're available, because I have no idea.
I think they're available.
It has, it has nothing-
I would just, knowing something's there, I just don't know.
I know what you just, but let's, we gotta go through the exercise.
Question?
Yes.
Gloria, Marjorie, when is the next tri-town council meeting?
Supposed to be in May, it should've been in April, but-
Is it being hosted by Hopkinton?
Whose turn is next? Let's see.
Scott, you haven't heard of it.
Well, where did you meet last time? It was Charleston, wasn't it? Where was your last, when you had your last tri-town meeting?
The meeting I went to was in Charleston.
The meeting that was in Charleston.
I went for, behalf of Scott, was in Richmond, prior to that. Scott, you weren't around.
Oh, yeah, and when do they meet? Wednesdays or Thursdays?
Thursdays, 3rd Thursdays typically dates, and I don't know if-
We haven't done anything, so.
We haven't picked any 3rd Thursdays yet, have we? One, two. No, we're lucky, we didn't, we didn't do that.
Have they called you?
One, two, three.
There's minutes.
Okay, so it's, the possibility is, the 26th.
That's July.
Well, that's July, yeah, when is the next? Are they, are they looking at June?
Scott said May.
Yeah, it's usually the 3rd Thursday, I believe.
I will check.
This is the 25th.
Okay.
Zoning Board's here the 3rd Thursday.
If we have it, then we could do it at the police station, that's what we did before.
Okay, all right, so you've got a, you've got a-
I have a meeting.
All right, so that's not a problem.
We're going back to your schedule, July 23rd.
Yeah, we got July 23rd on Monday, so that's okay with everybody.